And begin with all business and that would be the minutes of September 23rd's meeting. And you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And that wasn't our, I did hit the unmute button, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to the Harmony Sports Complex and Ahmad, are you presenting this?
Good morning Chair O'Brien, I think we're gonna have, the association is gonna be presenting, I think we have Charlie and also Sean from the Timbers that are gonna do the presentation stuff. With that, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair, thank you Ahmad. Everybody can hear me okay? Okay, perfect. Never know in our current world. So first, just wanted to start with some intros and also the appreciation for all the councilors, you know, again, taking the time to do this in your earnest and your concern for the community and for this park. So thank you for that. We appreciate being here. So my name's Charlie Clyer. I'm a commercial real estate broker by trade and started off my career in a commercial real estate appraisal, but been kind of youth development volunteer much of my career as well. And so that's kind of my background and the project lead on this development and the improvement project that we're hoping to embark on. Also presenting today will be Sean Jansen. He is the Executive Director for the Washington Timbers Football Club. And then also on the line, but won't be presenting is Brent Bates, who is the President of the Harmony Sports Association. So normally, in a normal face-to-face meeting, you'd like to have lots of pauses and be able to, you know, take questions along the way, but we got kind of a big presentation. There'll be a fair amount of material that probably answers some of the questions moving forward. So with that, the overview is that Harmony, just so you know, the entities, the Harmony Sports Association is a nonprofit and that's who the county has a lease with on the property. Underneath of that are two more nonprofits, which is the Washington Timbers Football Club, which is about, membership of about 3,500 youth. And then the Cascade Little League, which is a baseball program that's got about 1,000 youth participants in that. Next slide please. So what you're looking at here, some of this is redundant from some of the other ones, but just kind of want to be clear. So we have a premise to move forward. So the county, you guys own a 68 acre parcel there. As you look at this map, the green hash at the top part is the BPA easement and that's about 8.9 acres. Then there's two boxes that are hashed out. The first one in the middle of the property, that's approximately 3.8 acres and that has been carved out of the Harmony Sports Association lease and had intention from years ago that that would be a county park, you know, kind of prior to it going to this, you know, getting an annex into the city. And then the bottom hash mark there in the bottom left-hand corner, that's roughly about 10 or 11 acres, that is also outside of the lease with Harmony Sports Association. And I'll say with historical leadership, that was hoping to be a dog park. The partnership you had, or the partner in that scenario, wasn't viable here the last few years. So I'm not exactly sure what's gonna happen with that property, if that's still the intent moving forward. So. And then also, and then back up to the three acre parcel there, we have since determined, since our leases have been signed and whatnot, that there's no money available for either from the county or from the city, from park impact fees or otherwise to develop that. And so you'll see on the next slide. This is the kind of the phased master plan vision for the park. And hopefully some of you have that in a little bit bigger format than you can see on your screen here. But so this has been the vision for the park since 2017. This is an exhibit to the grant application with the state. And this is kind of the overall master plan that we've been working with, with, you know, past staff and current staff moving forward. And so in kind of 2015, our goal was to rather just kind of adding one field at a time as we're getting to the remainder of the property out there, have a good vision from a 10,000 foot level. How can we best develop and make this the best project for the community? And so in 2017, we had the application, but you'll see there's phase one and it's A through, or yeah, A through D. And I don't know if you can look at this very closely, but we'll come back to it another slide. But that's the introduction. And then, and then on that, the premise was since 2017 that we would come to you at some point in the future as we're getting going on the safety and parking improvement project. At that three acres, we'd pull that into the Harmony lease at the appropriate time as some of those improvements will be on that property. And then that the, we still have a goal for us as the Harmony Sports Association to have a park there, but it's probably gonna be more of that 8,000 square foot playground equipment and some benches that would be on that green forested area to the right that's labeled 4B. And so, and then part of the improvement project, well, I'll come back to that later. So go ahead, just go into the next slide. And part of that, you'll see down at the bottom right of that prior slide was an indoor facility. Sorry about that Rebecca, I'm jumping around on you. But yeah, so part of this, part of our master plan for this facility is to construct, this is like a 55,000 square foot indoor facility that you see would basically be the size of three basketball courts. That would be volleyball courts, football courts, et cetera. There would be some office in there, some admin space, restrooms and referee locker rooms and those type of things as part of this development. That was part of our master plan for this development. And we had some traction with some lead donors and some paths for grant dollars, both from the state as well as local. But that project with the run-up in improvement costs went from a budget of eight and a half million to about a $15 million project. So we have put that on the back burner for now. We're just trying to be focused on the parking improvement project. So next slide. And I know you guys have seen this slide before, but we can't stress enough what a beautiful partnership this has been with the public-private entity. You hear that term a lot and oftentimes it falls a little bit short of the expectations. I think this is something that has exceeded expectations. For 38 years ago, we started with our first lease, with the county allowed the Harmony Sports Association with a lease of 27 acres. At a later date, when we needed to add the soccer fields, you amended our lease, we picked up 40 acres. And then another, then as we developed those out, we went up to 54 acres. And as you can see, as we've talked about before, is that in a replacement value, it's a $25 million project, which doesn't include land or any parking lot or whatnot. Since we don't, since we just have gravel out there, we don't include that in our number. And that's, you know, we've developed eight baseball fields with turf infields. We've got nine soccer fields, three of which are full turf with them lighted. And there's multiple cursory supporting buildings out there as well. So I have to believe that when this was envisioned 38 years ago, that we've exceeded expectations in terms of the quantity, the quality of what we'd be able to do here. And then, and the massive use of this facility, which is most important, we don't want to spend all that money and not have it be used. This park gets used. And then the bottom there, just again, it's a benefit to, you know, our community in the sense that Harmony, we address virtually, you know, 95% of all the cost of operation for this. And the county's only responsible for maintenance of the well that's out there. And they've done some historical help on the gravel side for the parking lot. And again, you know, not all these faces are the same faces over that period of time. But you know, the county councilors historically have been very responsive. We've had, you know, probably six or eight different amendments to the lease that allowed us to move forward with funding, financing of our turf fields and those type of things. And so anyways, just again, appreciate the long-term relationship that we've had over basically the four decades there. The next slide, I won't spend much time on, that is basically just kind of showing the replacement value, how you get to the $25 million value. And so you guys can study that in detail at some later point or I'd be happy to have that conversation with you. All right. And then I'm gonna turn over the presentation to Sean for the last part of this partnership piece.
Thank you Charlie and thank you councilors for having me on there. I want to start with, and I just wrote this down. It wasn't part of my presentation, but I was a six-year-old kid in 1982. And I don't know who at the county decided that this was good for our community, but I've enjoyed this park my entire life. And it is certainly way different now than it was in 1982. But I do remember waking up, watching cartoons, putting on my soccer uniform and waking my parents up so we could get out to Harmony and kick the ball around. So it has been a outstanding partnership for a long time. So I think it was important to mention. Currently, we have about, as Charlie mentioned earlier, about 3,500 families within the Washington Timbers, a little over 1,000 with Cascade Little League. Those are all local community family members. Currently, the soccer side hosts four major tournaments per year. And the first graph, I'm sure this is hard for you guys to read on here, but you have the presentation. Our four tournaments currently bring in about $2.8 million in revenue to our community. And a large portion of that money, and it's broken out on that graph, comes from people from outside of our community. So we're having a strong economic impact each year. And it's important to point out that those four are bottlenecked right now because of our parking lot and entrance and exit. I am very comfortable in saying that I could double that figure if I could get people in and out safely, you know, with a new parking lot. That data, I wasn't able to get baseball's data for this meeting, but they do also host several tournaments a year, certainly not to the scale that we do. But there, that number is short of the total. Our biggest tournament in June, the clash at the border, is Clark County's biggest tournament of any kind. So this park is being used tremendously. The bottom part of that graph is just local use and just local soccer use. So we have programs from four to five-year-olds all the way up to post-college that use the park year-round. With the math that I've done, we have about 34,000 families that are using this park on an annual basis. And if you break that out even further, it comes to about 3,000 families on average per week that use the park. And most of those are multiple times. So for example, my daughter's a 13-year-old girl. She's included in that number. She has three practices per week. So there's the data that kind of really emphasizes what Charlie said. This is being well-used. It's being used across our community and it's also bringing in much-needed funds for our community. Next slide please. The reason why we're here, the bottleneck, those pictures you're looking at were taken on September 25th. So last week. That is what it looks like right now, except those potholes are dry today. Thankfully, the county has helped us along the way and pretty much on an annual basis. I started in January of 2015 and I think since I've been there, the county has been able to come in and do some significant grading and leveling and getting it back to drivable conditions each year. And they did so in October. And then in July of this year, they came in, there's a, an oil material that they put down, which number one, it reduces the dust, which is very important for us. We usually do it a lot earlier. July was this year because of COVID, we basically shut down for two or three months. So there was no reason to address anything. That oil also does a very good job of adhering the surface together, which delays the potholes. But as you can see from the pictures, it only delays, we're not fixing anything, we're just buying time. So in addition to the work that we get from the county, I'm constantly calling in favors. Fortunately, I have a good cause. It's a lot of kids in a nonprofit that we're trying to provide services to. Nutter Construction, Rachi, Northwest Construction have been, they're in my phone and I've called them numerous times. They've come out and done some fantastic work. We also put stuff out to our membership, private members and our families. A dad that owns a Bobcat or somebody that owns a tractor will come out and help us as needed. We've gotten recycled asphalt from the county and other construction projects where they're redoing a road. They'll come out and drop that down and then I'll find somebody that can spread it for us just to, just to get us through. And then lastly, you know, I do run out of favors, you know, at some point and there's really nothing else to do. The best decision I ever made in my second month on the job was to hire a gentleman by the name of Frank Purvis, who's our facilities director. He does all the maintenance out there. From about now till late February, early March, he's gonna be on our tractor with a homemade kind of really heavy metal grader. And he's gonna be out there breaking these potholes up until we get through the rainy season because it's really not worth me calling somebody in to do any kind of heavy work with equipment that's very expensive, knowing that in two weeks with rain and cars, it's just gonna be back to this anyways. So we're very fortunate to have Frank on staff, but he does spend an inordinate amount of time during the rainy season and winter season, making sure that it's at least drivable. It's never nice, but it will get better than what you see here with, you know, the hours of work that he's done. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Charlie.
Thanks Sean. So that's a lot of background on, and so kind of moving forward, it's a little bit more history, but what we want to focus on is the parking and safety improvement project in that timeline. So, so we were, so we made, we put an application together, which again was, you know, predominantly done by the Harmony Sports Association. And then it really, it was kind of the final hour that we put the county's name on the application just because we felt that would be an entity that the state would be comfortable with. And they wouldn't really know a one-off nonprofit like Harmony Sports Association. So that was put in. And as you can see, we were, we received that, the, I'm sorry, the approval, the, was granted on February of 2018. And this again is another win for our community that, you know, and then we, again, and then we appreciate the trust and partnership that we have with the county that we, you were able to leverage. You know, we got the grant, you guys were committed to ponying up the $2.5 million to help with the matching dollars. And we had a project going that we were able to contribute a quarter or three-quarters of a million dollars into the overall budget to get the matching dollars. So again, the county, you all were able to leverage two and a half million dollars into a $4.35 million project, which again, it shows that our partnership works. It has historically and, and you know, will, you know, indefinitely moving forward as well. So. And there's some, you know, we had a pre-application hearing there back in December of 2017 and that was really just as most pre-apps are, to identify a concept and to see what's gonna be accepted well by the city and what are the issues that we're gonna have to work through during our site plan application. We went on hold until we knew whether we're gonna have the grant or not. But then the city actually reached out to us and the transportation department to basically discuss transportation there in October of 2018. Based on the hurdles that we had with respect to the 13th Street issue, we knew we weren't gonna be able to make our deadline. So we got an extension to the grant, which was a two-year extension and it's bold there. It's the June 30th of 2021. That's the time period that we have to design, build and get refunded because it's a grant that gets refunded at the end of the construction. So remember that date. And so after we got the grant, that was because it was with the county, we had to, you all, we had to go into your process for hiring of the engineers. So that unfortunately, from creating an RFP to selecting and getting contracts signed, that was a 10-month process for us to basically get a engineer, engineering firm hired to help us with the design and the project moving forward. So that takes us to, you know, basically this time a year ago. And we thought, as the Harmony Sports Association and the current leadership in parks at that time, that we were basically trying to figure out, how do we oppose or find alternatives to the 13th Street extension going through the park that we all unanimously agreed to, agreed that that was just not a safe proposition for this park and the youth that we're serving out there. So, you know, since that time, so we were literally a year ago thinking, you know, we want to get before you all, much like we are today, to have that conversation, to get your guidance on how do we move forward. Unfortunately, shortly thereafter, there was a lot of transition at the county staff level. And in fairness to them, this is not the only project they're working on, that there's a lot of projects that they had to get their arms around. And so we were kind of, our project was kind of put on hold during that transition for about a five-year period. And during that time period, you know, we, the county had actually drafted an opposition letter showing inconsistencies in Section 30 and our concern regarding the safety. Harmony was allowed the opportunity to review that and add some of our edits or our recommendations to that. And then we were basically again, waiting to get the right opportunity, the right process to bring that forth to you all and figure out what's the best, best path to go have that conversation with the city moving forward. In February of this year, we were brought into a meeting and it was kind of mandated to us that we are no longer going to oppose, that's not the direction we're going. We want to find, so the street's gonna happen and we need to find alternative solutions to how we can make this work. And that's when we went down the path for the land swap. And then kind of through that process, I think it was good for us to do that, show good faith that can we find a suitable alternative, that we can make all this work well for the park, the county and for the city. But we kind of quickly figured out that there was, you know, this is gonna be a 12 to 16 million dollar proposition. And in COVID days, you know, our budgets are only shrinking, yours, ours and different. So we figured that out and now we needed basically, now we're back exactly a year later at the exact same point we were before, having, wanting to have this conversation with you. Well, that's kind of the history. And then I just want to add on the same slide, the second half of that is the timeline moving forward. So we're all clear on what the expectations are. So, you know, from our last meeting with you and a meeting we had subsequently with the city, you know, the goal is to reach a concept agreement with how we can move forward with our safety and parking lot improvement project. That's gonna take probably, you know, 30 to 60 days with the state, I mean with the city. Then from there, we would, you know, need to design with our engineers. That'll be a three to four month process. From there, then we would go, we'd submit our site plan application with the city. That process, the back and forth and review will be four months approximately. And then from there, once we get site plan approval, then we have to do all the final engineering. And this is a big property in terms of just geographically, you know, over 60 acres. So that'll take about four months. And then that puts us basically into winter. So who knows, normal construction for what we're talking about would be about four months. That could get delayed if we're trying to do that in the middle of winter as well. So at the end of the day, to get to where we need to be, that's gonna put us into April of 2022, which is 10 months behind what we currently have, our already extended timeframe. So if we were to act tomorrow, we're 10 months behind. So I just want to be clear on our timeframe.
Charlie, if I may interject, another point of urgency. In our January 2018 auction, we gleefully announced that we were awarded the grant funding to our club. There were subsequent messages that went out to the entire membership, letting them know that the parking lot is going forward. Since then, for the last two years, I've been deflecting questions regarding. And with the recent development of talking to you guys, fortunately, PAB, it's becoming more and more public knowledge. I owe our members an answer. They want to know, you know, if we got this funding, why are they still driving on the moon to practice every night? So not only from a construction timeline that Charlie had laid out here, I really owe our members some answers. So I just want to interject that there. Thank you.
Thanks Sean. And so kind of building towards the punchline here. So basically, as we see it and you guys have discussed before, you know, recap the two options. One is that the land swap, we're comfortable with. We think we can get a great facility out of that. But that, you know, is gonna be a 12 to 16 million dollar proposition. So if we're going to consider 13th Street going through the property, we need to have the money identified to make that happen for that to be a viable option. Option B is to maintain the current location and work with the city on conditions that will allow us to design and build the safety and park improvements, which, you know, effectively is meaning, means to oppose 13th Street being punched through the middle of our park. So as we see it, that's the two options. The next two slides, you know, again, if anybody ever wants to discuss these, these are our analysis, Harmony Sports Association analysis of the two alternatives. If we did a land swap, the first one is to move all the facilities south of the new 13th Street. That would require moving eight baseball fields and six soccer fields, maintaining the three turf fields that we have lit for soccer. But that would basically be a 16 million dollar number. Next slide, the other alternative would be is to stack baseball north of 13th Street and soccer south of 13th Street. Again, there's a lot of safety issues with that. But again, trying to be teammates and figure out a way of making this work, that would require still shifting the same six soccer fields south and it would be a move of direction of one of the baseball fields. And that would be basically about a $12 million project. And that again assumes that we have something to trade with the BPA easement property, that we have some form of ownership or long-term lease there that would have sellable value to, you know, in the, in the scope of a land swap. And these numbers are probably 90% accurate, but if, you could tweak the assumptions here and there. But at the end of the day, you know, we've got a $15 million issue to deal with if we go down that path. So that's, again, if anybody ever has any questions on that, be happy to show you how all that analysis came together. So the next slide, if you would please, Rebecca, I think. Thank you. So here we are. We've been down, we've been stalled. And now we got deadlines pouring down on us and we don't want to lose the funding that we have. So now is the time for action. And listening to your comments from your last week's work session, you know, it doesn't sound like you all want to spend millions of dollars to rebuild things that we already have. So what we're looking for from you, the ask today is that we need to have, in order for us to have meaningful conversations with the city and how we can figure out alternatives to this, we need to have strong opposition to 13th Street going through the middle of our park for lots of safety reasons. So the people we think we need to have on board is the Harmony Sports Association. We're obviously highly compelled to do that. The Parks Advisory Board, we've had good dialogue with them. We think they're fully on board with opposition. And what we're asking for today is we're hoping that with you all today, that the councilors and the county manager will be on board with, again, a unified voice of opposition to that happening and finding the appropriate alternatives or how we can make this work. The other asks are to give, for you to give clear direction to staff, that that is your position and that we need to oppose that and find the alternatives moving forward. And part of that is also, there's gonna be some caveats to that when we're having those conversations with the city. They might give us some short-term issues, but their long-term goal is to put a road through the middle of that park. And so I say with that, you know, trying to find the alternative to 13th Street, we need to make sure that it not only allows us to do our safety improvement project, but it also allows us to do the future development of that park without them forcing us to give them an easement and allowing that road to go through the property without all the suitable answers in place. The other thing I think would be helpful for us is that to be clear that Harmony Sports Association should be in all meetings and communication with the city of Vancouver. I think we lost some time because we were not included in that earlier. And again, and there was communication and, and, and to understand the dynamics of this whole project. So some of that is understandable, but we think we need to be part of that. We've been the long-term driver of this. And you know, Bill Burkey, you know, former Parks Manager, we had a great relationship with him that we always did what we said we're going to do, did it in a professional manner and understand, and always checking back in with them. You know, we'd like to have that same opportunities moving forward. So our goal then would be to reach a concept agreement with the city on how, what's the alternative to this. And then from there, and we do have a meeting set with them on Friday, which I'll touch on in my next slide. But then from there, once we have a verbalized or otherwise some type of letter in ten or understanding with the city, then we gotta get in sprint mode to design the park and, and the engineering and ultimately get in for the site plan application. And that would most likely involve a development agreement. So the next slide, which is you're on right now Rebecca, so that's perfect. So this is the overall park with our master plan and with the remaining pieces of it on there. So an update, we had a meeting with the city last Friday, as, as you directed from your last Wednesday meeting. And they had a lot of verbal communication, no solid answers or presentations of how they could make that a safe road. But at the end of the day, in my opinion, there's no way putting a road, In my opinion, there's no way putting a road, a major thoroughfare through that park that they're going to convince. The youth organizations as part of that, that that's a good idea. The parks board, they're not going to convince them that that's the right idea. And I won't speak for you all, but I would think, based on hearing some of your earlier comments. That you all would have grave concern over a road going through there. So at the end of the day. Think trying to find all, what you can make. A road look like going through there. At the end of the day. It's going to be way less safe than our current situation is. So, but right at the last five minutes of that meeting, Ryan Laposa, who is, you probably all know, is the director of transportation for the city. Throughout that he would like to find an alternative. That doesn't hold us hostage over the thirteenth street issue that we can move forward. So we don't lose our funding on there. So. Out of a meeting that wasn't necessarily perfect for fifty-five minutes, the last five minutes gave me hope. And we are, our committee is meeting again. This, this Friday out at the Harmony Sports Complex and we're going to go over. Lay out all the plans and just brainstorm, how can this be a win-win for both the city and the county? So. We're, so if any of the councillors want to partake in that, we'd be happy to have you there. We just need to get a head count because we're doing this with COVID, we want to make sure that that's all properly handled out there. So that's where we've been. And then what I think we can offer, so I'd like to get you guys on board with our current thinking, what can we offer the city as alternatives? So one, if you look at the slide and the, the, there's a yellow line right on the right of, of there. And that is south of our two baseball fields, north of that ten acre parcel that I was talking about that was originally going to be a dog park. And just north of the Humane Society. We have the ability to give a half-street road, half-street easement there. And, and Humane Society, that's actually a drive for them. It's not buildings or parking, that's their driveway into the property. And so. Yeah, I don't want to speak for them, but I think there's room there. Or a road to go through, that would be roughly eleventh or twelfth street. And that would give them some north-south or some east-west traffic that's not going through the middle of the park in an unsafe manner. So that's one thing that we have to offer. The other thing is where we left off the conversation back in two thousand eighteen is. How do we, you know, they want an easement through that property. And we are okay giving them an easement provided that it doesn't, if Harmony was to go away, for whatever reason. They could have that easement or if. So anyway, so that if, if for some reason we went away or we're no longer viable. Then they would have an easement for that property or for the dedication, for the easement, they would have that at that point in time. And the other thing, we're still open to a relocation option, but the money's got to be identified immediately. Or they can have the easement and if they want to. Make us whole ten years from now, because now they've got a twenty million dollar package. We're open to that concept and we give them an easement, subject to that being the trigger. So, so those are the things that I think we can offer. And so last slide, a big thank you and I apologize for that being a long presentation without an opportunity for questions. But I think we've got a great understanding of the history there and where we've been. Long-term and most recently, now we look for you for your guidance.
Okay, I would first ask if any of the councillors have. Questions or need clarification. From Charlie or Sean or whatever.
Madam Chair, just a quick question.
Counselor Olson.
So when you talk about being ten months behind, I'm trying to understand the timing of the grant and the timing of any decision with regard to the city and then. Future construction, can you just briefly just. Review that really quick.
Sure.
The time that you're talking about still meets with your grant deadlines.
Yeah, so. Oh, perfect. Thank you, Rebecca, you're ahead of me. So the bottom half of that slide says the timeline. So. If we leave here with clear direction from you all and, and answers to our asks, if you will, our action items. We would be meeting with the city, which we are on Friday. To get something that is probably in a written form that we're comfortable, that we should go spend tens of thousands of dollars on design. We're going to need that to be memorialized in some sense. So I'm just saying that'll take, you know, one to two months to do that. Then from there, we would, we'd get our engineers going. We would do the design, much like what we have here. Everything we've done, all the graphics you see, all engineering done. Basically all been done pro bono or paid for by the Washington Timbers. But anyways. But now that we have our engineers, we would cut them loose, we would have a lot of the interaction with parks. With the sports organizations. And so we would do. The design that would take three to four months, which gets us to April first of twenty twenty-one. Then from there, we would submit a technically complete site plan application to the city. That process will generally take, you know, ninety and then there's some back and forths in there. It's generally a four-month process. They're great about that process and so, but it's still, it's a four-month process. Then from the point in time we have approval, we don't do all our final engineering at that time, we just do some preliminary. And then once we get the site plan approval, then the engineers go back in and basically do all their underground engineering. And that's going to take four months and that's kind of a back and forth, the submitting plans uses like three different sets. Of plans that go back and forth with revisions. And then, so that takes us out to the end of twenty twenty-one. And then it's going to take four months of construction to do the improvements that we're talking about. That gets us out to April one of twenty twenty-two. Well beyond the June thirtieth, which is our current deadline with our, with our current extension deadline that we have.
Great. So I got all that. I'm just, so you, I guess my question is your grant is not in jeopardy?
Well.
On this timeline, I mean.
Well, I think one is that if we could. And, you know, and Galena and others from the county staff could probably answer that question, but they've been very gracious. Understanding, they see that we have our dollars that are in place, which is generally the major milestone. For a project. So they see that and we're. Comfortable, but we haven't asked the question yet and we'd like to get a little bit deeper into it to be able to say. You know, here's our new timeframe and be able to establish a timeframe that we're comfortable with. And one that we can now meet moving forward. So we need. That piece of it, then we go back with them and get the additional extension that we need.
So the county is the grantor. Is that, the county is the grantor?
They would, the grantee, right? So the grantor would be the state, right?
Okay. So you're saying that, that we can convince the state, the county can convince the state to. To increase the time once again to extend the deadline?
I'm optimistic that that would be the case. And again, they've been tremendous to work with and there's, you know, I'll say the. Staff at the county, your staff has had most of that dialogue. But historically, they've been very amenable to that process, in, in my opinion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted Counselor Olson, but was that what, what you were asking or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So bottom line, with this timeline, you're going to have to go back and ask for an extension for this grant. That's what I was, that was really my question. So.
Yes, correct.
If, if I can interject, I think the biggest need is to really come back to them. With the timeline going forward as Charlie, if we do that, you know, they want this money spent. They, they approve this project. If we can come back and show them how we're going to complete the project, I don't think there's anything to worry about.
Okay, any other questions or clarification from the council? And, and maybe speak about. How we would like to move forward with this, whether we support. The denial or the, the, the lack of support for thirteenth street as it is proposed. Counsel?
I do have comment. Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So the way I'm viewing this, number one, it's hard to imagine. A better public-private partnership. Than has been displayed by this presentation today. This complex is a gem. And the presentation was extremely professional and well-thought-through. I, I just can't imagine doing better at. Property usage and we have the, the right-of-way there, which makes this land even more valuable. Because of its availability for, for appropriate use with the soccer fields. You know, about the only thing that we've gotten behind on, I think is the. Egress and ingress into that park, which I've experienced and many people experience when you have major events there. It's a, it's a mess. And obviously the parking and, and gravel, potholed. Driveways internal to the park, we've gotten behind on. So I, I want to directly. Go right to what the ask is, you know, I don't want to go head-to-head and butt with, butt up against. The city's plans, but they've got a lot of redevelopment there. They've got some older arterial plans in that area. I think. The staffs, respective staffs of the county and the city really need to hit this hard. Because thirteenth going through and splitting the park really, to me, is, it's just unsafe for our families. And kids with the volume of participation in this park. And to have to then spend. Up to fifteen million dollars or more to alter, to split, to do a landslide swap. With what otherwise is a great layout. So I would ask the staffs to really hit this hard and look for that alternative. That would not put thirteenth through there. And so I would be all in favor of expressing that as a council. That we need to preserve what's going on there. To allow the grants to be used, to, to put into perspective what they're doing. With the redevelopment on First and Hewlett Packard and all that's going on in that area. This is absolutely a gem that we need to preserve and be physically prudent with. You know, to expend fifteen million dollars to move fields around, I don't think that's a wise use of money. So I, I support what's being asked here. I'm just hopeful that the, once the political. Leadership of Vancouver takes a fresh look at all these issues. That we, we can find a different alternative to putting a street through the middle of this park.
I have a question actually for, could be County Manager Kathleen. Do, do we need a formal motion on this? Or is this just a head nod or exactly? How, if, if as a council, we would like to. Go ahead with this ask and because I think in our discussions prior to this, it seems to me that. The council pretty well agrees that, one, we don't have the money to replace these fields and it already is. Looks like an excellent setup and the alternative and, and that we should work to find an alternative. Do we need a motion?
And Legal can correct me if I'm not accurate, but I think you just need the majority of the council to give staff direction on if we want to. Draft a letter for the council's review to send to the city. And emphasize what the council's desire is, but I believe we just need a majority of the council to direct staff.
This is Emily Shuldick, I would agree with that.
Okay, okay, thank you, both Kathleen and Emily. So is there a majority? Of the council that would like the staff to draft a letter to which we would look and, and then even. We were offered the opportunity, maybe one of the councillors, one or two maybe, that could attend. This meeting with the city of Vancouver. But let's deal with the first thing first. Do we have a majority of the council that would like to ask staff to create a letter for us to look at?
I would be supportive of that.
Okay. Okay, okay. So it looks like we do have the support of the council for staff to go and draft that letter. Is there interest with any of the councillors to attend this meeting on Friday? They need a head count.
What, what time is the meeting? Do we have any information about the meeting itself?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
At the Harmony Sports Complex.
Okay. Oh, I see, yeah. One o'clock at Harmony Sports Complex. I, I guess you can think about it, look at your schedules and let. Staff know so that they can inform. The association.
Yeah, so I have. Madam Chair, I did wish to attend, but I cannot, I have officially got my board. Getting scheduled for the exact same time, so I wouldn't be able to.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm willing and be happy, would be happy to attend if. Councillors.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good to me. Did you get that, Charlie?
Got it. Okay. And then the rest, and, and the action items, the balance of those are all part of that as well as that part of your motion or?
I'm sorry.
So the other part is to be clear with staff that, you know, we're, be party to all those conversations and whatnot and. And, and again, and be with them, you know, part of that negotiation to try to find that compromise and find the alternative.
Okay, I would like to hear from the rest of the council if that. If you're in favor of that, I am. Are there any others?
I would just reiterate, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
I know, I'd be supportive of that to the extent that it's possible for them to be involved, to have the expertise on the ground. So I'd be supporting with them being as involved as possible.
I just want to reiterate, the subject rate part, a lot of professionals, with all the volunteerism. With experts in the community, I would give great deference. To the Harmony Sports Association and all those affiliates that are working so hard to make this the gem that it is.
Okay, looks like you have that as well.
Final, one final thank you. I appreciate, we appreciate all that you're doing for our community and for the support here. Yeah, conditional support. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Very good presentation. Okay, we're going to move on to our next. Item under old business permit exempt agricultural buildings.
Good morning, council. For the record, I'm Lindsay Schaefer. So before you today, while Rebecca pulls this up, just to refresh your recollection, so the council had considered some. Changes related to the current code, which allows agricultural buildings to be built permit exempt. And the, the changes in the draft, as it was basically. Would require that our, would say that the agri, the permit exemption only applies to agricultural buildings that are outside of the UGA. And that are on a parcel that is greater than or equal to five acres. So that is what we put forward to Deeb for their. Review and they reviewed that and I am not seeing what Rebecca is putting up. So can others see? It's fuzzy on the screen. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and just walk through the questions. Since that seems to be fuzzy. So basically what Deeb's feedback. Oh, there we go. So Deeb's feedback, in terms of the five-acre parcel size and on a number of the questions. Was to allow agricultural permit exempt structures on any parcel of any size and also within the urban growth area. So this obviously is quite a bit different than what the council had, you know, tentatively thought about moving forward with. So. Basically, Deeb is scheduled, they have time on their schedule in November to review another draft and depending upon the council's conversation today. So the questions for the council really are. You know, one, do we want to make changes to the draft as it was before on the basis of Deeb's feedback or any changes in your thoughts? Do, is there something different or do you want to proceed forward with the draft as it had been before? So really, I mean, the fundamental questions. Do you want to continue to limit it to outside the urban growth area? Is the five-acre parcel size still what you would want to move forward with? And do you want, on the basis of any changes, I think if we're going to change from what it had been before. It would make sense to return it to Deeb for a second round of feedback in November. But if the council says, no, you know, we're comfortable with the draft as it was previously, I don't know that it needs to go back to Deeb in its identical form. But with that, I'll open it up for your discussion.
Councillors, questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Counselor Olson.
Yeah, so personally. The UGA boundary, I think. I don't think we should have ag-exempt buildings inside the UGA. I just, it's. It's more urbanized, it gives us the problems that we have with this big blue building and so, excuse me. So I think. That for me would be like, no, I think we can talk about, for me, the parcel size. Whether it's five acres or three acres. But, but I, but having ag-exempt buildings inside the UGA makes no sense to me at all. And I, I think it's just, it's going to continue to provide us. Problems and potential. and potential abuse of that code. So I understand DEB's got a perspective and and they're representing their own personal interests here. So and they're an advisory board, so I appreciate all the work that they do for us. I just really disagree on this one.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I would agree with those comments, and I think we could look at on smaller than five acre parcels. Maybe we set some size limits on the building or some setbacks. But I would. Yeah, I agree with councillor Olson's comments of keeping these out of the UGB for those reasons that were stated.
I would say that using the blue building, as unfortunate as that particular incident is, is that kind of thing makes makes bad law. I actually believe that DEB is on the ground. The people that serve on DEB are on the ground. And I think this is very possibly very thoughtful input. And I would agree with what DEB is actually has submitted and is is suggesting. Other comments of the council?
Madam Chair, if I may, so I was a little perplexed by some of DEB's responses. And and I don't know if Lindsay went back to them for clarification, but I would be in favor of sending it back to them for further analysis. I'm I'm reluctant to put any restriction at this point on the ag exempt law. When I'm, I'm not totally convinced that, and we'll refer to the blue building as a prime example, that that wasn't simply a misstep by permitting and continuing missteps by code enforcement. So I'm not so sure because we heard different things at different times. You know, hey, we don't need to do code changes. This is a zoning enforcement issue. And then and then that went by the wayside. So I'm not convinced that we just didn't have proper administration of existing code matched up with kind of a false use of the ag exempt to begin with. So I don't want to make aggravate the situation by making bad law because some law was poorly executed to begin with. I don't disagree with councillor Olson when when the issue first came up about, well, maybe this is incompatible within the urban growth boundary. But I don't know that that's the right solution. So I don't want to rush through this. I don't want to unnecessarily restrict ag exempt if we don't have to. And I don't disagree with with John Blum's assessment and Julie's assessment that, well, maybe we can go to smaller acreage within this proposed code change. But I I think we need to do more work. And I still think we need more clarity on why the blue building happened to begin with, with the existing zoning that was in place and the existing ag exempt laws. So I I would like to send it back to the DEB and get some further analysis.
I I don't see why we would send it back to DEB. We already have their feedback. What what would change if we send them back the same thing? Additionally, the blue building was built with our existing code. It wasn't a misapplication of the code. It was built as our code is written. And that's why we're looking at this, to see if there's some changes that can be made that prevent this from happening in the future. Frankly, I think if we were, if it were up to Mitch, I'm not going to put words in your mouth or Dan, but having permit exempt buildings at all is going to continue to be a challenge. And so I think having some ability to have these exempt buildings in the more rural areas makes sense. But this is just an open invitation to continue to use our code to build permit exempt buildings. And I don't see where that makes any sense.
And I would, I would, one thing that I would like to say about this question one, I think it would be very, very important that it is a bona fide agricultural activity. And that is stated in what DEB has suggested as well. As I understand it, the blue building is not that. Am I correct or is that wrong? Is it an ag building?
So the blue building, I think that the the issue when you have a permit exemption is that the permit exemption applies for when you have an agricultural purpose. But there's not really a robust verification that it is an agricultural purpose. And so there's some questions and I would leave that more for Mitch or potentially even executive session to see if that would apply in terms of that specific instance. But any of the code changes we're talking about wouldn't apply to that anyway. The way that the code is drafted would require anybody, if they're proceeding under a permit exemption, that they would still have to certify that and the, excuse me, that the application only would apply the code. The exemption would only apply if the building was for agricultural activities. So if they were building a building for other purposes, the problem that we run into frequently in the rural areas is that somebody will purchase a property. It has a structure on the property. It was used for agriculture. And then that that building is converted for non agricultural uses up to and including human habitation. So that's one of the the challenges that we see in the rural area. And I do want to clarify too, that just because something is permit exempt or would require that if we're going to make changes to the code, that doesn't mean these buildings can't be built. It just means that they would be required to go through the permit process.
The only comment I would make, and I would respectfully disagree with one point by councillor Olson is the ag exempt affidavit, if you will, or certification that this complies with our code didn't seem to be correct. So that's an enforcement issue or a step in the process that's missing where staff can confirm. And certainly having it in a resident, right in the heart of a residential development should have been a tip off that, boy, maybe there isn't an ag exempt use here. So it really isn't a code issue. It was, it didn't apply. So that was my concern from the beginning. And then it just kind of went downhill from there and still exists as a problem of a code enforcement for us, whether it's being used properly right now, whether it will be next week. So I I just not really, I I think we're not ready to jump to the conclusion that we need a code change here.
Then I agree with that. Or or at least this code change that it's the UGB can be really large. I mean, and and not be that urban in reality until it's developed. So I just, I just don't think that the UGB, that that this whole thing should be restricted to outside of the UGB if we're going to change the the code. So that's my stance. Councillor Lance, do you have anything?
Yes. I I concur with councillors Olson and Blum that these exempt structures don't belong inside the urban growth area. I think that's a conflict of known intent and purpose for the future of the county. So I don't know that I think this needs to be sent back to DEB for further work, though I would welcome explanation from them of their reasoning to help help us understand where they're coming from on that. Because I I do think it's a I I I question that recommendation. So I also think that there should be bona fide agricultural activity for any of this. And we should, that should be required.
So what I'm hearing is the majority of the council wanting to move forward with the code change to keep it to eliminating the permit exemption for agricultural buildings outside the urban growth area. I think the only question is whether or not we proceed forward with it drafted at the five acres or whether or not that that metric moves downward. And I know like councillor Blum mentioned, possibly for the smaller parcels having additional setback requirements or something like that. So otherwise, we keep it at the five and move forward with that.
I would support some language. I'm sorry. Yeah, I would support some language in terms of those parcels outside the UGB. If we don't do a parcel size, we do some other sort of setback requirements, just to make sure that it fits. But, you know, if it's if it's permit exempt, then we should have some sort of guidelines with regard to how that building is situated on the lot, whether it's not parcel size, then it's something else.
Okay, councillors.
I just wanted to confirm with Lindsay and get this on the record. So existing buildings would be grandfathered unless there was some conversion of it or modification, remodeling, you name it, if it was converted from a non from an ag use to a non ag use. And I think the other part of the question is, if you have a rural five area, but you have a nonconforming rural three in actuality, how does, how is that property? How would that be impacted under this proposed change?
So the zone wouldn't, as the code is currently drafted, the proposed ordinance change, the zone wouldn't matter in terms of the parcel size. The actual parcel size would be the determining factor. So if you were a one acre nonconforming use, you're a one acre, even if you're within a five acre zone.
Okay, I would be supportive of seeing some other language options for that exact example that councillor Medge brought up of there has a lot of nonconforming parcels. So maybe seeing some options for what that might look like under five acres.
So that would mean that this needs to go back to changes in changes to the code, to the written code that already exists. I mean, that that will have been proposed. And then that will go back to DEB.
So one, I, one suggestion that I, if I may, would be to have Mitch and I kind of put together some options for what that might look like for those parcels of kind of the one to five acres and present some options to DEB at their November meeting. Get their feedback on exactly what that one to five acres, just that narrow question of how would it be best to do this? Get DEB's feedback, return that to council time in mid November, and then finalize the code draft before the end of the year. Awesome. We'll do that.
Sounds okay. Thank you. Are we, did you, does that conclude what's basically all of the questions on this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Moving on then to housing option study and action plan update.
Good morning, councillors.
Good morning.
Good to see you. I'm here with Oliver. Oliver, are you going to start us off? Okay, I'll have him jump in when he, when he's ready. Thank you for having me this this morning. My name is Jackie Camp, a planner with Community Planning. We're here to give you an update on the Housing Option Study and Action Plan project and confirm next steps to move forward with a public participation plan and move forward with the creation and appointment of a project advisory group that would assist with the project. Just to give us a little overview, because I know it's been a while since we last talked about this. A consultant team was hired in March of 2020 to assist the county in providing this project. The purpose or the goal of the Housing Option Study and Action Plan is to understand our local housing challenges and identify opportunities to encourage creation of additional housing types that are affordable to a variety of household incomes within the unincorporated urban growth area of Vancouver. This could be done through the removal of regulatory barriers and or implementation of other strategies. So this is, it could include what the work that the project advisory group comes up with. So as I mentioned, a consultant team was hired in March 2020. We had the hearing to assist us. They've been working at beginning the first half. As you recall, the the contract included, of course, our scope of work for this project, which includes a stakeholder interview process, the PAG, Project Advisory Group Development, a data collection inventory and analysis piece, a policy and regulatory review of our codes and regulations and policies regarding housing, recommendation development to to provide council and the planning commission for consideration. So since March, the consultant team has been working, like I said, on the first task of the project, which was to reach out to key stakeholders and community leaders that represent a variety of expertise and perspectives in housing. And this was to help inform the scope of the project and help and help the project advisory group when they're appointed on kind of the initial framework of what potential housing issues they could be discussing. So to gather this information, the project team did interviews through a mix of video conferences, phone calls and an online questionnaire. They interviewed around 70 stakeholders. And you'll find all that information in the attachment that's from the consultant, J3 Consulting, the summary of the housing issues that they heard from those that they interviewed, as well as a list of those that were interviewed and the attachments of kind of the some, the notes of what they took from speaking to all the individuals and groups. They also, through the interview process and those discussions, were able to provide council a recommendation of a list of interest-based positions that could participate on the project advisory group. So you'll see that as well in their their summary report. Also, I just wanted to add, since we sent the this memo and the attachments in August, we've also been able to conduct, the consultant team conducted a focus group with Clark County Realtors, thanks to help from councillor Blum to coordinate that. So they were able to get some perspectives of from from Realtors that are working with their clients currently in the market to see what they're looking for, what they're not able to find, or just some perspectives on current buyers that are in the market right now. So we'll be supplementing those with the summary report when we go to hearing for the public participation plan. So that'll just be additional helpful information for the project advisory group to use as they move forward with the project. So today, you also will see that we've provided you a draft of the public participation plan. So this plan will help guide the engagement process for the housing project. Thank you, Rebecca. So the overarching goal, like we said, is to better understand our local housing challenges and identify opportunities to encourage creation of additional housing that is affordable to a variety of household incomes within the unincorporated Vancouver urban growth area. So the intent of the plan is to ensure that the county facilitates a thoughtful, open and equitable process to provide residents, workers and other interested parties meaningful opportunities to discuss housing challenges and develop solutions to their communities. So as you'll see on the public participation plan, we have a project overview that explains kind of a broad overview of the project itself. The project area of the Vancouver unincorporated urban area. Elements of the public participation plan, which includes the goals that we've put in place to help us reach out to the community. to help us reach out to the community and engage them with this project. Thank you, Rebecca. You can go on to the, yeah, page four, if you don't mind. And here we have the public participation tools we hope to use. With COVID-19, we of course have to kind of readjust how we do some of our engagement activities. So we know that maybe in-person open houses like we typically have done in the past, we'll have to rethink how we reach out to those. So we're taking that into account. We of course always have our website. We are already starting an email distribution list that we hope to continue to grow, that we can reach out to those that are interested in the project so that they are up to date on what the project is up to. We utilize the media contacts that we use for news releases and other communications that the county has available, such as Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor. We have the project advisory group that also will be helping with developing those recommendations and have representation of different community groups and interests throughout the unincorporated area. Here you see the list that was developed by the consultants through their interview process of who they're recommending to represent the members of the project advisory group. So we have our county council liaisons back in October, when we had our first work session in 2019. Councilor Blom and Olson had agreed to participate as county liaisons. City of Vancouver is recommended as the largest city and adjacent to this area. It's their their unincorporated Vancouver urban growth area. Public housing developers, nonprofit developers, for-profit developer, innovative builders, so builders that are using, you know, unique innovative housing types, schools, feasibility and financing, real estate, the older adults, and the types of housing that they are looking for and need for aging in place. Community and neighborhood groups, the helpless community, communities of color, persons with disabilities, youth or young adults, so those that are, you know, coming out of college, first-time homebuyers, those in the new workforce. And then lastly, our large representative from a large employer of the county. So the project or the public participation plan also talks about how we will have, of course, always provide our record of written comments that we will receive and post and provide to our decision makers. We have, of course, our public meetings at key milestones that will be communicated to as as our public participation goals state. We're going to try to be as interactive and use creative ways to engage participants, especially to since a lot of it could be virtual. So we're trying to be as creative as possible with that. Here we have a number four, some additional outreach tools that we'll be looking at and considering with this project, videos, potentially independent walking, driving tours, so people can do it on their own time and as they can, story maps, questionnaires, phone interviews, text questionnaires, printed materials, maybe interactive poster board displays, mailings and print advertisement and flyers. We're 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 open to trying out all different methods to engage the community on this project. If you go down to the the lower part of the page, Rebecca, so we and the next page is five. So we've got our public comment periods and hearings that we will go through with the Clark County Planning Commission and of course, council, which were are both televised by through CVTV as well. We of course have all our noticing requirements and will of course also be complying with all of our legal requirements for the Americans with Disabilities Act. And also, as mentioned, I think in the earlier in the public participation plan, translation services for those that request that for information on the project. Number six here indicates the list of stakeholders, which could, there could be more than this, that we hope to engage with. So it's a list of all different kinds of groups and organizations and interest in the county. And lastly, the public participation timeline or the the timeline also of the project, which we will be continuously updating as we move forward with finalizing the public participation plan and the appointment of the PAG. So we'll we'll keep this posted and updated on our webpage so that people can check that out and see where the opportunities are scheduled for them for meetings that you all have or meetings that are open houses, online open houses, or information such as that. So we hope to utilize our website to the fullest capacity to make sure that people have somewhere to go to find information as up to date as possible as this project moves forward. So if we could go back to the memo. And then we can scroll down. Perfect. Thank you, Rebecca. So the staff is asking direction from council on a few things. First, on that there's two ways to form the project advisory group that we've put here for you in this memo. One option is for the staff and the consultant team to provide you a list of potential members based on the interviews that were conducted for your consideration and approval. And secondly, an open application period for those interested in serving that would represent the groups listed in the final public participation plan. So as there's a note there, option two does require a longer timeline, but does provide the opportunity for any member of the public to apply to be considered. So we're here today to answer any questions you have about the update so far and moving forward. We soon as if you the council is, once you're finalized our public participation plan, we could schedule the hearing and in the meantime, work through the project advisory group appointment process, depending and go with whichever direction you you so please. So that's all I have for now. I hope that I know that was a lot really quickly. So I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any more information.
Thank you, Jackie. It was also a very long, a very long report, 88 pages, as I recall. As I was printing it, anyway, I did want to, how about the council? I actually prefer option two. I think that it's the the broadest group of people, hopefully, that we would get. But that's just my opinion. I solicit that of the council.
I do have a question, Madam Chair. I did not read the report in great detail, but did we get provided by the consultant a number? You know, I've seen national numbers and maybe John even has this off the tip of his head, you know, for what we're missing in our inventory locally in the county. I'm just looking for a gross number of how many housing units we are short countywide by best approximation or has that number been provided? Will it be provided?
Thank you, councillor for that. Yes, that is part of the following task. So once the project advisory group is appointed, then the consultant team wants to coordinate with them and start that data collection and analysis piece, as well as the policy and regulatory review, so that they're kind of working together on those. So that that data collection and analysis pieces will be when we get that kind of information.
Council Madhvi, a couple of years ago, probably early 2019, it was like 3,000 to 4,000 units for our area. So that's obviously changed, but a lot of construction, but there's also been population growth. So we certainly need to revisit, see what that number is. As far as the options, I'd be interested if there was a hybrid of the two, where we reach out to the people that have been involved and encourage them to apply, but also put out the broader call for application. I think there's value in people that have been involved with the process to stay involved. So I'd hope that we encourage them to apply, but I think not limiting it to just those that have been involved at this point would be a good thing. So there's some hybrid of the two. I think that would be a good route forward.
Definitely.
Other comments?
Yes.
Okay, hang on one second. I just want to, because I want to follow on what councillor Blum said. I would agree with that. Those that have been involved should be told, go ahead and apply. So that those that if they want to continue through this longer process, it would be very good for them to have the historical information. So that doesn't preclude having others, you know, from applying. Council Madhvi.
Yes, Jackie and planning, I just wanted to say thank you for this thorough update and reports. I really appreciated reading them and all the work that has gone into it. So I would support what councillor Blum suggested. I think that there's been a lot of work that has gone into talking with folks and individuals showing their interest. And I'd like to be sure that they know that we'd love to have them continue to be involved and please apply. But yes, if we can do an appeal to the broader community, so we make sure that if there's somebody else that we should have involved, that we that we do hear from them as well, that would be fantastic.
All good.
I'm sure. You mentioned that option two requires a longer timeline. Do you have any, do you have an idea of what that process would look like in terms of timing?
Yeah, it depends on how long we want to put the application period out and just kind of doing just some brainstorming and scheduling for this part of the year. It may not make a big impact because holidays, so I think we're probably good. And hopefully, we'll be meeting with our consultant team to kind of flesh out, once we have a scheduled hearing date for you all, so that we can move forward. But I don't think it should make a major impact. And we hope to work with them to to make up that difference if we can. And if we have to extend the timeline of the project, then we'll have to discuss that.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and I would concur with councillors Blum and Lance. I think, you know, we've got a good foundation. So those folks who are part of building that foundation, if they want to, they want to stay and continue to see the project through, I think that makes sense. And then broadening it out to other community members. You've got different perspectives and input, I think, would be valuable. And if that adds a little bit of time onto the project that enhances its quality, I think I think that makes sense.
Okay, councillor Madhvi, did you have any comment to make?
I think everyone's pretty unanimous to be inclusive as possible. And so I certainly support that as well, even if it is a longer process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jackie. We do appreciate your thorough report and look to the results.
This is our level. What I will also just add is that the actionable item that we are looking for is moving forward with Rebecca to include your on your hearing item approval of the public participation program or plan. That's number one. And then we will be working with the consultant and staff to come up with hybrid of how we move forward with appointment of the advisory group. So those are the two items that we would like. I think we've getting confirmation to move forward. I didn't hear how soon we can schedule approval of the public participation plan, which council has to do at a hearing.
Madam Chair.
Councillor Blum.
So I think, given the fact that we're going with the option that will take a little bit longer, I would be supportive of getting the public participation plan on our hearing schedule as soon as we can reasonably do so.
I'd support that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jackie and staff. We will move forward. The only last thing I will add is that this project, as well as the Buildable Land project, are the two issues that will help inform the council as you move forward to your next plan update, because those are very key and should help you informating your policies on how we move forward. Given this project has to be completed, the two project has to be completed before the start of the next plan update. So I am looking forward to making progress. I agree with Jackie that we are in a COVID pandemic environment. Hopefully, by 2021, as you move into 2021, we'll be to do in-person meetings, so all our meetings will not be visual. So thank you, councillors.
Oliver, I'm wondering whether you think, because something you just mentioned makes me think about this. Do you think there's any possible way that because of COVID, the Department of Commerce will allow moving comprehensive plans forward? Give us more time for that. I'm just curious, just thinking about your comment. It seems to me there may be counties that say we couldn't really do this very well because of that.
The legislature already moved the timeline by one year. What is happening is that Commerce, if you recall, they gave us grant to do the Buildable Land's work. And they have not really moved the goalpost on that. So but the legislature is the body that moved the schedule of when the the plan should be completed by one year. However, the grant, we have to spend it in the year that you wanted. And I have been communicating with Commerce, they're not yet ready to move that. It was a budget that came through the legislature, so there is no additional funding. We have to spend it in the year that we are supposed to.
Well, I'm just back to the extending the one year by the legislature. That was prior to this COVID, wasn't it? Or was it?
It was in 17, I believe. You're right.
Yeah, so it wasn't because of COVID, and my question surrounds entirely that issue. So.
Well, and I think to my my response is Commerce cannot really do much. They have to go back to the legislature to change. And the legislature have changed once because Kitsap County wanted to be on the same schedule with the PG Sound area, King County, Snohomish. So with that change, they moved everyone else by one year. So but only the legislature can move that timeline, not Commerce. Commerce cannot do, it moved budget that the legislature approved to get the Buildable Land's work.
Madam Chair, that might be a good question for Lindsay. Run past Josh and the lobbying group to see if there's any thoughts on the legislature doing that.
There are, there's certainly some discussions. We're going to see legislation proposed regarding GMA. I think that the question is not necessarily legislative motivation, but what the legislative session is going to look like this year. There's pretty broad consensus that if we were living in a non-COVID world, the legislature would certainly be taking some sort of action related to GMA. The issue of climate change continues to be a topic of considerable discussion. That being said, we are in this COVID world, and so we don't know kind of what that's going to look like, what the legislative session is going to look like. And so we anticipate some action and can we'll certainly monitor that and can put forward any priorities, but yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jackie and Oliver. We will move on to the next item under old business, and that is fireworks.
So I will just open up this topic briefly. I sent out an email with the fireworks ordinance that was recently passed in 2018. So obviously, the council did some work in council time and work sessions, stakeholder groups prior to adoption of this 2018. So obviously the council did some work in council time and work sessions, stakeholder groups prior to adoption of this 2018 ordinance. And this modified primarily amongst other things, but primarily the dates of discharge allowable for fireworks. It also unified the county. Previously, we had that, that line, the demarcation line for the Northern County versus the the Southern unincorporated county, and this unified it across the county. So there's been some interest from the council in revisiting this topic. I will note in terms of the deadlines that any changes that the council would make at this point due to state law and the requirement that any changes have to be in effect for a year prior to actually going into effect. Any changes that the council would make in the next few months would not be effective for 4th of July of 2021. They would go into effect for 4th of July of 2022.
So I believe it was councillor Olson that wanted to bring this forward. So could I hear from you councillor Olson about why, what is, what you brought this forward for, what are we looking at?
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity. So I think we had our last conversation about this maybe mid, oh my gosh, I don't even remember now with the COVID world, but we, the last time we talked, we talked about possibly putting something on, on the ballot. And we walked through that process for a short bit and then realized that that's not something that the council has authority to do. So I continue to get requests from constituents about fireworks. And I continue to commit to them that I will try to bring it in front of the council on a regular basis to see if we can get some traction on it. And so that's the purpose of today. I wanted to get a sense from the council if there's enough of us willing to take a look at, I mean Rebecca, if you, you've got that ordinance up there, I think it's on page two. An opportunity to, yeah, right there. To put into effect a safe and sane policy where we don't outlaw all fireworks, but that we limit those to those that are safe and sane. So those that, you know, those that are going up into the air and exploding and have a lot of mortars, that those would not be legal in the county. So, you know, I went back and looked at the number of meetings that we've had over the last few years. I think I counted meetings that were actually on an agenda. Thirteen separate meetings where we had a public discussion or public meeting over fireworks. Two, two more additional meetings where we had stakeholder groups of more than 25 people at a time providing input on, on this policy. So I would ask AIS staff, Lindsay or Kathleen, maybe what a timeline might look like if we were to consider an ordinance change between now and the end of the year. I understand that any change wouldn't take effect until 2022. That gives all those impacted parties plenty of time to start to look at how that would, how they would have to adjust in a different environment. And more importantly, I think this just gives our community and those who are really, really affected by fireworks a chance to just move beyond this and that we care for our pets and our seniors and do we actually take some action on this? So I would, I would ask that we consider a safe and sane policy going forward.
So in terms of timeline, if the last hearing that we have, the last scheduled hearing is December 15th. Looking at the Thanksgiving holiday and needing to provide the required newspaper notice, we would really need to have a final work session by November 18th. And then of course, before that, we've got the holiday November 11th of council time. So really we have the month of October to kind of do some of this work. And then could have, you know, meetings the first week of November or November 18th. Like I said, would kind of be the last date to have a work session. That wouldn't give us a whole lot of time with the Thanksgiving holiday to finalize the language, but that would sort of be the last available date.
We also have a budget. We're going to be doing the budget on November 17th. But I just have a question about this, this, what we were given and provided, this ordinance and the circles and Xs. Could you explain that?
So if you'll recall in 2018, there was considerable discussion amongst the council when we adopted the ordinance. And typically we like to make sure that we have what the language is that the council wants to adopt prior to actually bringing it forward. But given the fact that we wanted to have it in place before 4th of July of that year, so it would be effective that following 4th of July. And there were some things that could go into effect immediately in terms of the fire marshal. We prepared the ordinance as kind of a choose your options. And so even if you were to continue to review the document, this was not the only thing where there's a cross out. There are other areas for which it's kind of option one, option two. And then from the dais, the council was able to choose which option we move forward with. So this was something that was under consideration for the council and that ultimately was not selected to move forward. And that's why you see the handwriting on there.
So. It sounds like, so councillor Olson, are you suggesting that we go, we go through this again and just look at the things that were Xed out? Or are you just talking about the page two, safe and sane thing?
So I'm really just talking about the page two, safe and sane, I think, you know. Just, yeah, I mean, I've got some, obviously I've got some opinions on how many days that we sell fireworks, but I don't know that that's something that I really want to revisit at this point. So my purpose would be just to focus on the safe and sane language.
Yeah, and that, and okay. Other councillors. Chime in. I can see why you are bringing this up and you want to take care of it for the end of the year. I will restate, we've had a lot of meetings on this and I'm sure you hear from a lot of your constituents, councillor Olson, because you're in an area where it's pretty urban, although it's, it's not within the city. And we have two councillors right now that are almost, we have one councillor Lance, who is entirely in the city of Vancouver, who already restricts fireworks altogether. Councillor Blum sits in a district that is, what, two thirds in the city of Vancouver, maybe even more, whatever. So I'm, I don't know what councillor Medvee's opinion of, on this is. But I, I'm a little reluctant to want to go forward with this and get it done by the end of the year, simply because I, I can pretty much predict the outcome and the outcome is this is rushing it to do this again. That, I guess that's my bottom line. This, this is rushing it to do it again. And furthermore, those that are going to probably agree to this already have it restricted in most, if not all of their district.
So, Madam Chair, I try not to think of myself as a potted plant. I'm happy to tell you what I think about this. So if I may, the, this is an important topic and, and it's one I think we do need to invest time in. Right now I am between our budget, which is really uncertain, not knowing the financial conditions that we're going to be continuing under for how long into the future. We have so much on our plate right now dealing with the pandemic. And the bottom line here is this is a very controversial topic, especially within my district. And we need, and I wasn't here when you had all of this extensive participation a couple of years ago. I wasn't part of the council at that time. But I think because of the public concern and interest on both sides of this issue, that we really need to be very deliberate and open with the public and have open participation. And we cannot have that right now. And we are challenged with our neighbourhood associations. I think there's three of them trying to associate right now. We're, we're moving forward with our rural code changes with, or put open hearings with the equestrian community, and that's somewhat of an, of an experiment to see how that works. But under the constraints of the pandemic and the rush, I don't want to rush through this. And so I would ask all the council members to know how important this is, that we do need to deal with it in a pragmatic way with open public participation. Once again, I would ask that we put it off to a time when we can do so. And now is not the time. It would be just too much of a rush to jam this through on the schedule that was just outlined.
I also think that we have quite a few work sessions coming up in October. Seems to me that the last time, at our last council time, we approved like four other work sessions, something like that.
We did. And to be clear, so we have work sessions every day, October 14th, 21st, 28th, November 4th, and already have a meeting on November 18th. So no matter what timeline you would pick, you would either need to have a second work session on a Wednesday, which of course we've done in the past, or have a different day for the work session. So you're correct that we have quite a few scheduled in the next few weeks. And if we were to add another one, it would be a second one on that day.
So I'd be supportive of moving this forward. I was originally, I voted to oppose safe and sane. I hope that the changes that we made to the code in terms of days and times of activity would be helpful. But I know this year I received just as many, if not more complaints from citizens in my district who are impacted by the sale of fireworks in the county. So regardless of whether it's allowed or not here, it's not that hard to drive across the county city border and buy these. So I would be supportive of moving this forward.
And I would too. I'd also, I also want to clarify the chair's understanding of district boundaries. That I also do have constituents in the, in the county and we also all have equal votes on this board. But I think that a lot of public process has occurred. While I wasn't on this board at that time, I did pay close attention to it. I think we can all do that research and I'd be willing to move this forward for continued consideration.
And if, Madam Chair, and if we, if we're just talking about this, this piece of code change, Lindsay, I can't imagine this would be a lengthy or difficult process. So having another work session, a 20 or 30 minute work session, given all that we've been doing over the last number of weeks, I don't see that being a heavy, heavy burden.
No, in fact, the code change that you see before you, I would need to confirm with Dan Young and with legal, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't move forward with what you see in front of you. And then you're right, we could do a 30 minute work session, you know, probably either October 21st, October 28th, so that we're not trying to squeeze in with the budget. But look at one of those days to tack on a 30 minute work session there to review this language, answer any questions. And then we would be able to have time to prepare it for hearing.
And Chair O'Brien, I just sorry if I, October 28th is the budget work session for 2021. So I just, for your planning purposes, I just wanted to, you might want to avoid that thing.
Yes, and yeah, I, I, okay. So where would that, it's the 18th for the work session of November that you said, Lindsay, then?
Correct. So I could look at October 21st. We have a work session on the shoreline management that's set to end at 10. We could squeeze in a work session from like 10 to 10:30 and then start council time at 10:30.
I'd support that.
I'm fine with that.
Sure.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Under new business, we've had constituents reply to, to this next item under new business and staff is going to be working on a response. And we will delay this particular piece until further, I mean, till further notice. I don't know. Kathleen, do you have any idea when this will come back on to the agenda?
I'll work with staff and determine, it could be next week. I just want to make sure that, you know, they have the time if they need to update their presentation and take in the constituents feedback that they provided, that we received just before this meeting. So we just want to make sure that things have been thoroughly vetted. It could be next week or the following week.
Okay, thank you. Councillor reports.
And if I could, because I do want to kind of touch on that item that we just postponed. So there's, yeah, councillor Medvee, just keep your comments pretty pointed and not go into anything that, that is attorney-client privilege. Thank you. So I appreciate that advice. And so I, so I will state this at the very beginning. I, I'm getting increasingly frustrated as to what's transparent and what's not. What, you know, our governance needs to be transparent with the public as much as possible and not pushing things constantly into executive session. So that's just a first related comment. We, with all the emails that we're getting, not only from file, fire danger and work that we need to do or already has been done, as a council report, you know, what we were up at the Big Hollow Fire and talked to the regional director of DNR as well as the director of Public Lands herself. And so the rural district is very challenged, being so close to forest lands. And, and if we think back just a few weeks, we were imprisoned by smoke and fires everywhere. Those are, that threat is now waning, but we don't want to lose sight of work that needs to be done. So I, I did send some emails as follow-up to our conversations at the Big Hollow. You know, I'm very concerned about wildfire protection and also the alert system that the state has in place and that we should have in place locally. And so we had some correspondence as it relates to Camp Bonneville in that regard. Some general comments about the number of neighbourhood associations that are trying to associate. There's, there's a lot of gaps and challenges because of the pandemic. I would like to move forward as creatively as we can to get these neighbourhood associations back online. I just participated in a transportation forum where, a regional transportation forum, where we voted online on different issues. So they took kind of a poll, an informal poll. And I'm just wondering if that adaptive kind of Zoom meeting could be used with the neighbourhood associations? So we could move them forward, so we could re-engage the communication gap that's now being created, not number one, by the absence of some of these associations, but also the need to be more transparent. I want to reiterate my urging of the council to consider putting together a regional public committee on the future uses of Camp Bonneville. So I'm not going to get into the specifics that were, may need some work behind the scenes to look at some of what was in those, those constituent letters. But I'm very concerned with the communication flow between the council and the community at large in these particular associations and those who are trying to associate once again. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Hopefully I didn't make the lawyers nervous.
Other councillor reports?
Madam Chair. I just have a quick one. I participated or attended our forensics investigations council meeting last Friday. We have meetings every other month. And, and there was an updated report on the lab here in Vancouver, that that lab has been completely built out, that they've got their staff hired and trained and that they are making a significant impact on the backlog of sexual assault kits. So, so I just, you know, wanted to let the council know that all the support that you've provided in the past and, and in supporting and in supporting that DNA lab here in Vancouver has made a difference. And then I'm probably going to reach out to The Columbian just to do a follow-up story. They did a number of stories early on when that, when the lab was identified and being built out for the DNA, high-throughput DNA work. Just wanted to publicly state that that work's been done on time, under budget, and they're making some significant progress in that backlog of sexual assault kits, so.
Other reports? Okay, if not, we'll move on to our next.
I had a Zoom meeting with the Council for the Homeless. And I wanted, if I could, to get an update from John and Temple regarding the joint meeting between them and the City of Vancouver Council regarding the executive modification of how the Executive Committee is made up of the Council for the Homeless. Because I hadn't heard anything in a while, and so the topic came up with the Director and I yesterday. Is there some news to report on that with the city?
Yeah, and actually, you're timing, you're a week early, but that's okay. We've had a couple of meetings, and I think we are like the 99% there towards bringing a draft for a new agreement for that joint executive meeting. We've been really pushing the last couple of weeks to try and get that done. We have a, we met, what day was it? Yesterday, Monday? But they met Tuesday, had some conversation on just a few minor points. The plan is to have that finalized by the end of this week. Lindsay's working on that, and then circulated to both councils for discussion. So we're pretty close on a board that I think meets the goals that both councils had coming into it. So stay tuned for more, probably next week.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move on. Lindsay, I guess, do you have anything to report to us additionally?
I have one important topic for you. And I think Rebecca's going to be pulling up. So I have been in discussions with CREDC and the Greater Vancouver Chamber of Commerce regarding the small business grants. So of course, we have some of the small business assistance that you approved recently that's going to go to Fourth Lane Forward and Mercy Core Northwest. So that aside, we have about another additional 8.5 million that we're looking to get out the door through CREDC and the Chamber of Commerce. And so what I have, what I sent out to you and what Rebecca has up on the screen is the draft contracts. And I don't know, Rebecca, if you have that list of questions, that would be the ideal thing to have on the screen. I don't think it's within that. It was a separate document. But, and I can't share content. So the questions that I have for you, really, the eligible business, as I have it drafted, would be five to 49 employees for the CREDC contract and five to 100 employees for the Greater Vancouver Chamber of Commerce. What we're seeing actually is that there are some grants that have been available for the five and under and some that have been available for the 10 or more. And there've actually been a few businesses that fall in that five to 10 category that feel like they're kind of getting left out. So want to make sure that we include them as eligible entities. Yes, this is a question. So then the second question I have for you, the way it's drafted, is that it would be limited to entities that have been in existence prior to July 1st of 2019. So you couldn't have an entity that started up, you know, what we're trying to avoid is a fraudulent situation where somebody creates a business just to take advantage of these grants. So jurisdictions have set different timelines. Some have gone back as far as 2018, some have set it at January 1st of 2020, kind of at the beginning of the pandemic. So I picked one that I've seen a couple of times, which is July 1st of 2019. But obviously, the council can change that. The prioritization, so the one thing that I have listed in there is would prioritize childcare businesses. Doesn't mean that they would be limited to that, but all that that means is the prioritization is if we receive more applications than we have funding, that childcare business would receive prioritization within that. So I don't know if you want to keep that priority and if there are other priorities that you would want to include in there. And then the last one is the maximum grant size. So as it's currently drafted, the maximum grant to each entity would be $30,000. And when you look at that, we would need to award to at least 283 separate entities. And I use the word entities because the Greater Vancouver Chamber of Commerce language does apply to nonprofits as well as businesses. CREDC would have to be a business. So, you know, $30,283, that's quite a few grants to get out the door in a relatively short period of time. So that's why that number is as high as it is. Obviously, you have the base qualifications that the entity has to be located, physically located within Clark County. They have to have experienced a loss or expenses. So it could be, you know, that they had to put additional PPE or additional changes to their physical configuration, or that they've actually seen a loss of revenue as a result of the restrictions placed on because of COVID. So that applies universally across the board. But these are kind of the criteria where the council has some flexibility if you wanted to change. And before we get to the discussion on that, I'll let you know that, so the groups, CREDC and the Chamber, are really excited to move forward with this. They think they've got the capacity to do it for us. And I'm, you know, really thankful that between the two of them and Mercy Core and Fourth Lane Forward, I think we're going to get a broad cross-section of the business community in the area and those nonprofits as well. And so my intent is to get the draft contracts to the two organizations by the close of business today. And I would ask that I get this feedback, I'll incorporate that in there, and that today you authorize Kathleen to make any final changes and sign the contract so that hopefully we can get her signature on those by the first part of next week and get the money to the entities by the middle to the end of next week so that they can start their grant process.
I have one question about the number two item.
Sure.
I, what was the reasoning behind that? And if it's just a quick reasoning, I think that there probably were entities that began in January of 2020 that would even be more hurt. I can think of a restaurant that I see that, my goodness, it looks like a beautiful restaurant. I'm sure they put a lot of money into it and probably, you know, so, and I bet they weren't established or had begun by July 1st, 2019.
Right. So the reasoning there is to prevent an entity that starts up and, you know, at least on paper, has begun, but really is just trying to take advantage of the grant opportunities that are out there. So it meets all the qualifications, it's a business, it started. And so now it's going to get all this grant money that's really intended to help businesses that had been in existence and seeing a loss. So the reasoning behind it is if you have a business that started in, say, April or May of this year, and then, you know, they really haven't necessarily seen that loss, but it's harder to say they have or haven't. So that's, it's more of a fraud prevention. And like I said, some jurisdictions have gone with the January 1st of 2020. Some have gone back as far as 2018. Many of them have used the July 1st, 2019. So I just picked what many of the other entities had used. That's why that is what it is, but it's up to council discretion. It can be changed.
Follow up that, Madam Chair, Councilman. That's where I was going to focus on number two, but I also had a question about childcare. The, so whatever the official proclamation on the emergency for COVID, that would be my start date. You know, if we had any business in existence prior to that date, I think they are the most new and most vulnerable to being shut down by the pandemic because they had no established business. So I, you know, I would like to change that July 1st to more like February of 2020 or whatever the appropriate date is, that we have a clear defining point before the emergency orders. But I think we would be excluding our most valuable, vulnerable, new business, small businesses, if we picked that earlier date in July. And then the other question I had, with other laws and initiatives out there, are our childcare businesses adequately being supported now? Otherwise, I would support some priority being given to that because it kind of cuts across all businesses if we don't have childcare and with schools in the situation they're in. But is there enough protection right now with all of the different bits and pieces of support out in the community for childcare?
Yeah, so that's a good question. There are some specific childcare grants that are coming through from the state. I will also note, though, that these contracts require non-duplication, so verification of non-duplication. What that means is that if the childcare establishment has already received funds from another source in order to compensate fully for their losses, they would be ineligible for these funds. Now, if that childcare establishment maybe got $5,000, but they've incurred $15,000 in losses and expenses, then they could get an additional $10,000 from us. And so, yes, there are certainly resources available that are limited to childcare entities. That being said, I don't see a problem with keeping that priority if the council wanted to because of that non-duplication language. And personally, I would recommend that you keep it as broad as possible and allow CREDC and the Chamber of Commerce to vet all of the applications that come in. The more narrow that it's prescribed, the harder it is for them to do their grant administration job. And they're the ones that are really on the ground that can reach out to the businesses and are going to do that outreach to determine what that need is and solicit those applications. I fear that if we have a lengthy priority list, that maybe businesses will say, well, I'm not one of those, so I won't even bother to apply, as opposed to wanting to get as many applications as possible. Because as I said, getting 283 grants out the door and potentially more than that, that's assuming that they would all be at the maximum amount. So, you know, getting that many applications in, it's best to keep it as broad as possible and then allow the Chamber and CREDC to prioritize effectively.
So, Madam Chair, if I could just, I do think that we should prioritize restaurants or we should have them at the top of our list. I think they've been one of the many, or not many, probably the most affected industry, and they continue to be the most impacted industry. I saw a statistic the other day that if we don't do something, and I say we locally, statewide, or at the federal level, do something to help these restaurants, 85% of them will be out of business by the end of the year. And I know this piece that we're doing is small, but it's impactful in our community. And so if there's some way that I could, you know, implore or, you know, ask the council to support putting restaurants kind of high on that list, I would ask that question. And then I also agree that a business, an entity that's been, that is in business at the time of the emergency declaration should be eligible, that we don't go back to July, because there's a lot of businesses, again, small restaurants, that might be left out if we use that date. So just kind of my thoughts on that. But I really, if we can do this here locally for our restaurants, I think it would go a long, long way.
I would like to see restaurants get a high priority as well. I think they are suffering mightily and will go ahead. Some already have gone out of business. Other comments of the council? I also understand, just before, I also understand that childcare, you know, covers, you know, a lot of different businesses. But I wouldn't necessarily want to put that restriction or priority on since they also have opportunity to get other grants. I have one question. Go ahead.
I would, thanks, Gary. I would be supportive of adding restaurants to the prioritization. I agree on the date being the start of COVID. I would be supportive of leaving childcare businesses as a priority, knowing that it's not making them exclusive for those, but that it is a priority. I think that's an area that's hit a lot of families hard. So that's, I think, worth having as a priority. And that I'm good with the other recommendations.
Thank you. The question I had, Lindsay, how do nonprofits benefit? Are they able to apply if they've been hard hit because they haven't been able to fundraise and they've got employees as well? Are they treating this at the other business?
Yeah, so they would be ineligible for the CREDC. That one is going to be specific to businesses, but the larger, so CREDC would get 2.5 million of this. The remaining 6 million would go to the Chamber of Commerce. And within that 6 million, nonprofits would be on equal footing with a business to apply for that. And so to the extent that they can show that they have increased expenses or losses as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, that they would get grant funds to recoup for those losses or expenses.
What, Counselor Lance, did you raise your hand or unmute? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I also support changing the date to the date of COVID. And I think probably the date of the emergency order would be simple and clean. So I'd support that. I think adding restaurants would make a lot of sense to the priority list. And I'd support keeping childcare on the priority list as well. As has already been said, it's not an exclusion of others. It's simply if there is, if priorities need to be set, then that would mean restaurants and childcare businesses would get priority. And I think that helps the community. It also sounds like the concern is more being able to get all of this money out the door than the direct competition. So this simply puts that into place if that conflict comes up.
I have one clarifying question, Lindsay, and that is, these entities don't need to belong to the Chamber, Greater Chamber of Commerce in order to receive a grant, do they?
Correct. They do not need to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Same thing with CREDC, nor do they need to be within the city limits of Vancouver. They just have to have a physical presence within Clark County in order to be eligible. And same thing with the nonprofits. So we definitely thank the Chamber for doing this because it's going to reach beyond their existing membership.
Right. Okay, and so we, you also, you wanted us to confirm giving Kathleen the authority, is that it?
Right, to just confirm that Kathleen has the authority to finalize these contracts next week. As I said, I'm hoping to get them out and then have them finalized by Monday or Tuesday. So to confer that authority for Kathleen to sign the final signatures.
Do we need a motion?
I would think that's just best to confirm basically.
Yeah, okay. I'd entertain a motion.
Move to delegate authority to the county manager to sign contracts for these grant funds?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, to give the county manager authority to sign these contracts for these grants. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Lindsay. So now we are going to go into executive session, although I'm going to ask that we have a five-minute break in between. But one thing, two pending litigation for 30 minutes, one collective bargaining for 10 minutes, and one potential litigation for 10 minutes. And Kathleen, do we have any decisions after? Any action?
I don't believe there is any action now.
Okay, is Emily?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I will see you on the other side in five minutes. Thank you. We're adjourned.